7:01 PM. I'll call the regular city council meeting of the city of Columbia to order.
Roll call.
limits.
Wrestler.
Book.
Is Monday.
22.
Marty's.
Here.
Garmer.
Here.
Corey.
Here.
Yeah. Okay, we'll stand for the pledge allegiance.
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. We do the republic which sustains one nation, indivisible, together in this.
Thank you. The proclamations, recognitions, presentations. Nothing. Public input, there's. No one has signed up for the public input section. Comments and announcements. I'll just kind of announce and encourage all the citizens to go on to Columbiaconnections.com to have your input for our. Future development of the city of Columbia. So this is your time to. I'm sorry, Columbiaconversations.com. Thank you, sir. So it's Columbiaconversations.com. And it's your way to give input of what needs the city will need going into the future, what we're doing well. And what you'd like to see for future developments here in the city of Columbia. So encourage you to do that. Also, on February 12th. The city is partnered with the. Monroe County on ICE. It's the Monroe County startup. And for February 12th, here in the parking lot of City Hall, we will have a ice skating rink. So. Encourage everybody to be on the lookout for that announcement coming up. Also, on February 16th. We will be having the city of Columbia along with the Waterloo Chamber. Will be hosting a job fair at the Falls. So all Columbia businesses, this will be free for you to. Get out and try to get some employees that you're short of right now. I know everybody is hurting with employees. So. February 16th at the Falls, the Columbia Job Fair along with the Waterloo Chamber of Commerce. So. Be on the lookout for those items coming up as well. Any aldermen with any comments or announcements? Okay. This month, we will have Mr. Doug Brim. For the department heads. He'll be speaking. Yes, sir.
Position of city administrators a bit more unique than some of the other departments. There's a lot more that goes on behind the scenes within the actual departments themselves. Quite a few of the initiatives that I personally work on eventually wind up before the council in the form of ordinances, resolutions. Or greater discussions at the individual department level, i.e. Subdivision reviews, engineering projects and things of that nature. So rather than focus on kind of what's gone on over the past year. I wanted to take just a minute or two to talk about kind of some of the initiatives that are planned for at least the first quarter of 2022. We just wrapped up open enrollment with the city. We were very pleased that we were able to maintain 0% flat renewals across the board. Through the Cigna and as well as the standard for ancillary benefit offerings. One of the things that we're going to be talking about here this evening, a little bit later down the agenda is something that's going to be taking quite a bit of time to implement formulate. Eventually, if it's something that is permitted by the Supreme Court to move forward, that's the. City's response to the occupational cell occupational safety and health administration OSHA, their emergency temporary standard pertaining to COVID-19. I'm looking for a little bit of guidance from the city council on the formulation of that particular policy itself. But that is something that unfortunately represents another unfunded mandate, this time not only at the. State level, but it's ultimately being driven at the federal level. Next would be something that's been on the radar, at least ever since I came on board with the city, and that's the adoption of the revised city code of ordinances. It's something that I have received some question from some of the aldermen, I think. All of the existing or more tenured, if you will, alderman, I do have your questions and comments. But it is something that I would like to. Make sure that Mr. Corey, Mr. Garmer, Mayor Hill, they have the opportunity to review that document and provide any kind of comments, questions, concerns that they have. It's actually rather fortuitous that we do have a bit of a delay because there have been. Some issues that have been brought up pertaining to the building enforcement side specifically. And Alderman Holtcamp, this was a concern that you had brought up whenever we had initially started reviewing the. Code update. And that is the fact that the code of ordinances right now states that the city of Columbia shall enforce the most recent or the most up to date ICC codes. However, in practice, we're essentially on the oh six. ICC, the IBC, commercial, the residential codes. So that's something that I do know that there is some interest. From some of the insurance sector folks that obviously they're always looking to push the cities. Toward enforcing the most up to date codes just to reduce liability and exposure. So that's something that we will be looking at. Would it be appropriate for the city to jump to the latest edition of the ICC codes or not? We will try to work on a tabular form that would enumerate specifically, this is what the oh six code in practice states. This is what the, I think it's the 18, 21 has been out. Okay. Sometimes they run a little bit behind. I don't know if the 18 was still the most recent or if they had bumped up to the 21. So. That this is what the 21 sets for a particular item. And as a result, this is what the anticipated impact would be. Now, I can't guarantee that we'll do that for each and every minute detail that's in the code, but we'll certainly try to touch on a lot of the highlights. It's quite easy in some of them, for example, between the oh nine and the 2012 NEC, I believe it is. The arc fault breaker was implemented. And that's something that is rather costly. If you're going to be putting in an entire home. I think it's something that was subsequently removed in later additions of the NEC and responds to the kind of concern that. Costs were rather prohibitive on that side. Something else that's been hanging out there that will tie into the recodification as well is the liquor code update. The city, we are still operating under a moratorium for any new video gaming establishments. Part of the reason behind that was we did have a conversation with Mayor Hill. Mayor Hill did provide his input. We were ready. To bring that to the city council for review. However, the state of Illinois and the Gaming Commission made significant updates to the state rules governing video gaming operations. One such example is prior to the latest update, non-home, non-home rule, excuse me, municipalities. Faced a cap of $25 per terminal that they could assess as part of the licensing requirements. Recent legislation has just increased this cap to $250 per terminal. So it's something that we will need to have a discussion at the council level as far as what direction do you all want to take with that policy? And its implementation. Just to clarify one thing, the last point that I have, I was also going to plug the the job fair. But it's something that it's not only, you know, the city of Columbia and Waterloo, but we do have a whole host of sponsors that have very recently. Got on board with it. The city of Columbia, the city of Waterloo, the Columbia Chamber of Commerce, as Mayor Hill noted, the Waterloo Chamber of Commerce. The Monroe County Economic Development Corporation. Kevin, I believe you're still a board member on that entity. And then also Monroe County, the county board has agreed to also participate. So it's something that we originally had kind of a. Looked at doing, you know, just at the city level, we heard rumblings that Waterloo and the Waterloo Chamber were planning to do something similar. Rather than certainly do competing interests or, you know, try to cut each other's throats. Let's try to reach across and see if we would be able to garner support, which would get more businesses and more attendees hopefully interested in participating. Not only to help the Monroe County businesses, the Columbia businesses that are struggling to find people. But also those folks that are out there that are still out of work, they're still looking. But something that we have. Posted it publicly, it is on the city's website, go to ColumbiaIllinois.com/jobfair. The flyer is up there right now. It's open to employers to register. We are inviting St. Clair County businesses. To register, we're not guaranteeing that there's going to be space. Priority will be given to. Monroe County businesses. However, it's something that if it is a business that is within. The corporate limits of the city of Columbia, we will, of course, extend the opportunity from them to participate at the same level as other Monroe County businesses. With that said, I'd be happy to answer any kind of overarching questions or anything that I might have. Peaked, but I think after this presentation, we just have. Community development that would still need to present. And then I think I've got Chris Smith with DLPW kind of batting cleanup. And then the intention is that we'll start the cycle over again with. PD, I think went went first, so.
Correct.
Alright, thank you, folks.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Brim. Alright, the next item on the agenda is the consent agenda.
Right consent agenda consists of an item or a motion to approve minutes of the December 20, 2021 regular city council meeting. I two is a motion to approve closed session minutes of the December 20, 2021 regular city council meeting. I three, a motion to approve payment of vouchers for the period of December 17. Through December 17, 2021 through December 29, 2021, the amount of $99,464 and 45 cents. And then finally, a motion to approve the statement of funds for November 2021.
Sir, any items, excuse me, there any items that anyone wishes to pull from the consent agenda? Alright, can I get a motion to approve consent agenda as read? It's your hook. Stay minutes. Sorry.
Roll call.
Neets.
Yes.
Wrestler.
Yes.
Hold camp, yes.
Martins.
Yes.
Yes.
Corey.
Yes.
Okay. Next item is new business. K1, so be. Mr. Smith will provide an overview of this. This is. Approval of a letter of support of Monroe County's application for a rebuild downtown. And Main Street Capital Grant for intersection improvements on Illinois Route 3. Mr. Smith, can you hear us?
Yes, can you guys hear me?
Yep. Ron Claire.
Good evening, Mayor and Council, and Happy New Year to everybody. My only item tonight is a request by Monroe County for a letter of support. As Mary said, for a grant, this grant is to be used for improvements on Illinois Route 3 between the city of Columbia and Waterloo city limits. The proposed grant is to possibly fund our cuts, which are restricted crossing U-turns. At Hanover Road, Coxville Road, Granny Lane and EE Road. Now, although this is outside the city limits, like I'd said, and it is actually on high dots right away, so they have. Procured a letter of allowance from the state of Illinois to do this. As the exhibit kind of shows, if those aren't familiar with what an arc cut is. Essentially, for instance, if you're at Hanover Road. You no longer would be able to take a left. Or yeah, you'd have to basically take a right, go south for about 1,000 feet. To a proposed U-turn in the median to head back north. And to kind of put it in perspective here in Columbia, it kind of be like being at Modemart. Taking a ride out of Modemart and by the time you get to South Main, you'd be taking a U-turn to go back in the other direction. Is what they're proposing to do. The state's on board with this. They prefer this option versus traffic signals. So if anybody had any questions or comments.
You don't have any questions or comments?
And the only reason why they're including us, obviously, an additional letter of support might help them get the funding. The other item is that, you know, technically the YMCA and the Osani Building are kind of under an annexation agreement with us. You know, if we get there in time, they will be within the city limits. So I think out of a courtesy, they wanted to include us in some of the improvements that they're planning. In the future on three, because eventually, you know, these, you know, our city limits could encapsulate these these improvements someday.
Yes, sir. Mr. Russell has a question for you.
Chris, so basically, the 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 crossroad of. The Y Coxville Road and New Hanover Road would be closed in lieu of these new openings.
Correct. You would no longer be able to go straight through the intersection from the side roads or. Go left, you'd have to go right. So it's a right in, right out at all these intersections. You go down about they they'll have to figure it out, but estimate about 1,000 feet in which you would merge into like a left turn and it would turn into a. An allowable U-turn to head back the other direction.
Thanks.
I don't know. I'm sure all you guys, they use a lot of these down in the southern states. And quite successfully. To alleviate crossing traffic. It's where you have most of your fatalities trying to cross all four lanes of traffic, but. We've also kind of talked about possibly if this goes well and that. To, you know, come further down to Gilmore Lake Road area and things like that, so. So this would just be like the first step of the development of along the corridor. Yes, Alderman Neets.
Mayor and Chris, police department have any comments on this before we, you know?
I think it's a great idea.
It appears to be a great safety measure to take to me, too. I didn't know if there were any hesitations on anyone's part. It just seems like a very positive step in moving forward.
Yeah.
As traffic counts increase.
Yeah. Hopefully, we'll. Hopefully, this will. Go through and we can get a lot of funding for the county to. Alderman Garmer.
Yeah, and I think that other than a head on, a T-bone is probably second worst. So this would avoid a lot of those, right?
Correct.
Yeah.
Yes, absolutely.
Yeah, it just it minimizes the conflict movements by over a half, you know, instead of having to. Figure out how to cross four lanes of traffic going in two different directions. I mean, you're only competing with one lane of. Trap, you know, two lanes of traffic going in one direction. And and like I said, it's not like, you know, if you could just envision yourself like at Modemart and you're you're sitting there and you've got an opening and you leave. By the time you get to South Main, it's about where you would turn around. So yeah, there is a little bit of inconvenience from the south leg, but as far as. You know, eliminating head on collisions and and, you know, good reduction of fatalities, you know, this is something that the state really would like to do. And again, you know, so they're on board with what Monroe County is proposing.
Alderman Riddle.
One thing I wonder, that new development, well, like Stumpy's going in there at Hanover. I mean, that's going to be a lot of people coming in and out of there. So. I was thinking about that the other day, and I guess this will actually help curtail that because they're only going one way to turn back around. So. So yeah, I think it'd be a good idea.
Yep. Alderman Neets.
One more. Chris, if if the timeframe was mentioned on here. Deadlines and all that, I didn't catch it.
Well, I'm not for sure about the award, but the deadline for the grant submitted was January 10th.
Oh, soon. Okay.
Yeah, so we would have to get him a letter of support, you know, this week. They've been working on it, you know, for, I guess, two or three weeks.
Great, great. Thank you.
And I'll just read off the real quick. So in installing these, what they call our cut or sometime J-turns. Reduce the fatal crashes by 70% and injury crashes by 42% over a three-year post insulation. So. Just wanted to. Comment on that as well, so. Alright, alright, thank you, sir.
Thank you, guys.
Oh, sorry. Can we get a motion to. Approve a letter of support of Monroe County's application for rebuild downtown and Main Street Capital Grant for intersection improvements on Illinois Route 3? Can we get a motion, Mr. Martins?
I'll second.
Mr. Garmer, roll call.
Neets.
Yes.
Wrestler.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
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 Yes. Thank you. Next item is discussion of the Occupational Safety and Health Administration. Emergency temporary standard pertaining to COVID-19, Mr. Brim.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As discussed earlier. The city is going to be subject to this emergency temporary standard through OSHA, although we are not. Subject to the federal OSHA. Illinois is a state that has a state adopted plan that pertains to state and local governments. It's something that a December 27th statement from Illinois OSHA states that they intend to adopt the standard for straight and local government employers. While they do not yet have guidance out. It is something that they do anticipate having something in place before their January 24 effective date. On down the line, the Illinois Municipal League. Basically states that although. This has already been subject to one stay by a federal court, which was later overturned by another federal court of appeals. Oral arguments are scheduled before the Supreme Court of the United States for January 7. IML is recommending that municipalities prepare to implement these policies and procedures by or on January 10, 2022. Essentially, what this is, it's a situation where. Large employers, those employers with over 100 employees. Are required to develop, implement and enforce a mandatory COVID-19 vaccination policy. Or adopt a policy requiring employees to either get vaccinated. Or elect to undergo regular COVID-19 testing and wear a face covering at work in lieu of vaccination. The 100 employee threshold does not distinguish between full time and part time and temporary employees and the counts. Therefore, using that guidance, the city of Columbia currently has 118 employees, putting us well over the threshold. It's something that I know a mandatory vaccination policy would not be received well with the city. Therefore, I would be recommending that we would pursue the second. Component. That is a vaccine that get vaccinated. Or submit to weekly testing and where he face covering while with the city. It's something that there has been very little latitude or leeway on. From OSHA and obviously Illinois OSHA is going to pick up and run with it, if not make it even more stringent than the feds. By January 10th. The city of Columbia as an employer is required to gather the vaccination status of all of its employees. And again, I want to reemphasize, this is nothing that we have latitude on. It's something that OSHA has made very clear. Would be considered a willful and wanton violation, which basically means the fines would start at $14,000 per individual per day. The records are not maintained. With that said. It would be my recommendation that we do proceed with the policy itself, just to avoid incurring any sort of. Fine monetary or otherwise. Certain types of fines can also be. Personally levied against directors of the organization. Myself and the mayor, I believe, would fall under those classifications where we could be potentially held personally liable in certain circumstances. OSHA has set forth a draft policy that I have been working on. Essentially, the blanks that I need guidance from the city council on. Pertained to the actual testing itself and the costs thereof. By federal guidance and which will ultimately be state guidance. The city would have to give employees four hours to get the first dose of vaccine. And four hours for the second dose of vaccine. There's nothing that's in there that I'm aware of that's contemplating the booster at this time. But for those employees that are currently unvaccinated that would be electing to get the vaccine. We would have to give them essentially four hours of sick leave. Plus, I think we would allow them up to two sick days against their accrued leave to recover from any effects of the vaccine. Alternately. If an employee chooses to test rather than. Pursue the vaccination. It's something that we are not required as the employer to allow them time. We can force them to do it on their own time. And we can force them to do it at their own expense. The city, we have for the past, Kim, help me out here, probably two months. We have kind of co-opted the Illinois State Board of Education's approach to testing. And that if an employee has a known exposure. Rather than forcing them to isolate or quarantine at home. We have been doing the test to stay, which basically means they will test on days one, three, five and seven following the exposure. It's something that we have been facilitating that through EMS. Kim has been gracious enough to help our other departments out. Through this testing approach. However, I think today was probably our peak with 12 tests administered. And I don't think we had any positives though today, at least that was made aware of. But regardless, going forward, it's something that is this something that we want EMS to continue to do for those individuals that remain unvaccinated? Is it something that do we set? Okay, I'm just going to pick on PD. Is it something that for those patrol officers or those PD personnel that are still unvaccinated? Between this hour and this hour, you must report to the EMS bay for testing on a weekly basis. DOPW, you'll be on the next day. And the reason why I'm taking that approach is we don't overwhelm EMS because obviously they do have. There are some downtime. Their primary goal is responding to emergency medical incidents within the city of Columbia or boundaries. So that's kind of first and foremost, do we want to use EMS to continue to do the testing for those individuals that remain unvaccinated? And two, is it something where? Does the city bear the cost of those tests? And I think the most recent number that Chief Lamprick and I discussed. We were able to get them at a cost of 625 per test, or is that something that the employee themselves should pick up and bear the cost of? So I think that's kind of at least the direction that I'm looking for now. If you have any issues whatsoever with the direction that I've laid out with requiring either the vaccination or test, you know, please let me know. I mean. This is, you know, a mix between kind of a policy decision, which is the council's purview and personnel management side.
Anyone wants to comment?
Just a couple of questions, though, as far as the, well, first of all, I guess. With regard to. EMS doing it, is it a, is it taxing for your department to do?
Kim, do you want to step up to the podium for this part?
You know, we've been still car seats, which are about 15 minutes. So there's other community services that we do. But if if both ambulances are on calls, they would have to wait. I did send Doug a policy today. They were coming into the station, things like that. I'd like to keep them out of the station and have them just pull up and call. We come out with masks and gloves. We swab them, we test them, they wait their 15 minutes. So to keep COVID out of where they live. I think we've come up with a better option on how to direct them to get tested instead of coming to the door and coming in the station and all that.
So the doctor's offices do it too, so it makes it makes sense.
So the test we, you get 48 in a case for $300, which I ordered the maximum out today that I could order, which is six. So I should have a substantial amount coming in. It takes about four minutes to do the test. I mean, it's really relatively simple. And it takes. Four to five minutes to enter the data onto the federal state mandated website. So not real taxing. What we usually do is like today, I waited till five o'clock. And I went in and I entered all the data at once instead of trying to log in each time. And it's a very secure site. So every time you try to log in, it's kind of like here in Columbia where they have to send you this code on your phone. And you have to plug it in and then get on. So I just do them all at once. I did them all at once at the end of the day. But we, the one thing that I can say that if we do them. There'll be some validity to it as opposed to them going somewhere and buying one of those rapid tests, doing it, writing their name on it and taking a picture. I mean, I could test you if I was positive and you're not, and I want to go to work. I mean. So there is some validity if if it's kept in house. And I kind of side with Doug, though, that I do. I do think that there should be some cost involved to the the employee that. Is not getting vaccinated. For this, I don't know how that'll work out. Because I just spent $1,800 on tests. So I don't know if I should front the cost of all of that. I mean, out of my budget, but.
When there's an alternative.
Correct.
The is, aren't the tests are not, I mean, we provide insurance, the tests are not covered by insurance.
That is something that I know there was recent communication. I'm not sure about stickiness specific, but I know at the federal level, they were looking. To push that forward, but I'm not sure if that's actually gone through as of yet or not.
I do know the ones that you drive in.
No. So they are not.
Yeah, I certainly have not seen it.
They are not. Okay, I wasn't sure about that.
Fairview to the health department and drive through. Those are taking three to five days now to get results back because everybody is so inundated with this. So that's another factor, too, that getting testing at some of these health department sites. It's taking a while for them to get the results back.
Not only that, we're waiting to get the results back, but the actual tests themselves are taking a significant amount of time. I had an employee today. That shot me a message this morning stating that they were going to be, they were feeling a little under the weather. They felt it would be prudent to get tested. They went to the Sinclair County Mall site. I think they got in line around 8:15 and I think the individual texted me. Closer to 12:30 that they were almost to the the front of the line to get tested. So I mean, you're looking at almost four hours and 15 minutes, four and a half hours. Feeling for hours, something like. Feeling for or something like that.
That's what I'm thinking, though, as far as convenience and annoying the administrators. I would think that having having it, I'll call it in-house when it's not really in-house, but in a way it is. Having that would be a certain certainly an advantage. Distance proximity of travel for for most, if they're reporting to work anyway, or have reported to work, it seems like that makes sense. If we can address the cost factor that we need to, you really talk about validity and just the continuity of all of it. You know, it's it's so varied. It's so varied by facilities. It's so varied by how it's administered. You know, it's not administered the same by everyone who's 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 giving the test and in some respects, if it's not a tremendous burden on the department, it almost seems like although we don't all, we don't know how long this is going to go on. How long will this go on?
They got their way forever. That's basically the idea. That's the idea.
There has to be parameters. They can't show up at midnight or something like that. And I usually get to work between six thirty and six forty-five. So that accommodates the D O P W workers. They want to get tested before like seven o'clock before they go in. And we have, you know, night shift, the police officers for night shift usually show up about five fifteen to five thirty. So it can work. Well, if it's on their time, I mean, so but there's people there that all of my full timers now have been approved through the training, which if you can do this at home with a rapid, why do you have to do three hours of training? I don't know. So they've all done the the training. So there should be somebody there twenty-four seven unless they're on a date and do what's called. It's just, you know, maybe we can set parameters for any time between six thirty and eight P M. Okay, to get it done. Would also be my recommendation. So if you're going to work dispatch tomorrow morning at six and I don't get here till six thirty, then you need to come test with me the night before.
The night before.
You're okay with that when I talked about about that.
And you'll always have someone on staff that's been approved for this.
Yes, because I have two full timers on every day.
Okay.
Unless one's on vacation. But yes, so there should be two people there that are
approved. Okay. Yes, on the rest of.
So OSHA, I gotta get this straight in my head. So OSHA has mandated that we're going to test people who refused or have not gotten vaccinated to prevent them from getting sick or getting other people sick. Because as I understand it now, everybody can get this. It's just a question of the severity. So if you're going to force people to get this test and we don't want to get vaccinated, but the people who are vaccinated don't have to get tested, but they're susceptible to getting sick of the other people. This just confuses the heck out of me.
I I agree totally, but you can't.
Am I understanding this wrong?
Yeah.
See, and we also face, I I have full compliance in EMS vaccines and they're getting boosters, but because we had CMS come down and say, we're not going to pay you if you're if you work in healthcare and you're not vaccinated. So that's all those Medicare funds. So Doug and I are still looking into that because that's still a possibility because they only put it on hold for the states that filed the suit and Illinois was not one of them. So, you know, Medicare can say we're not going to pay you unless your people are vaccinated.
Just make sure I got this logically right. I don't want to be fine either, but it's like the logic of it just.
I mean, I I think the, I think the like, I don't want to make anybody that doesn't want to get the vaccine. So I guess the, I guess the main thing we need to do is figure out if we want to charge the employee that's unvaccinated with the tests, the cost, six dollars. Six twenty-five per test.
Right now, that's today.
Yeah.
It it's of my opinion that I don't feel that this should come out of the budget of the EMS department. I at the very minimum a six twenty-five charge, I think, is a prudent way to approach it.
We're saving them, you know, if they go to one of these other places, they're going to be out for three days.
Yeah.
To get the results.
Sure.
So that's three days of of work they've lost, whereas we're doing it that day and getting it back.
And it's fifteen minutes.
Fifteen minutes.
Yeah.
So we're letting them not miss two to three days of work if they had to go to Fairview Heights and have it done. So so if they have to spend six bucks, ten bucks, whatever, is it worth three days of work?
Must be weekly. Right. Also test weekly. Weekly, weekly test for, okay.
Question. Doug, do is this proposing that only testing sites are valid? Are are at-home tests allowed, the rapid tests as well?
They are not allowed. I actually have the OSHA website in front of me right now. Let me go back up to the
And if not, my question would be then, why are they selling rapid tests?
Give me just one moment, Doug. I just
Other than to, other than to instigate fear. Right? Because
Don't ask. Under the E T S, a COVID nineteen test must be a test for SARS-CoV- two that is cleared, approved or authorized, including an E U A or emergency use authorization by the U S Food and Drug Administration to detect current infection with the SARS-CoV- two virus administered in accordance with the authorized instructions and not both self-administered and self-read unless observed by the employer or an authorized telehealth proctor.
How convenient.
So basically, sure, they can buy their own, but they have to bring them in here and Kim or somebody has to watch them.
Oh, that that would be something that would be acceptable. And are we talking about just the the nasal swabs or?
Correct.
We're, yeah.
Only thing we're talking about.
The ones that we have the Clio waiver for are just the nasal, the rapid, the Abbott Bionics Rapid. It's the antigen. So far, they've had. We've shown pretty good results with the people that have tested positive or testing positive, although you can get a false negative if it's too early and there's not enough of the virus in the body. So I've been exposed to Doug today and three to five days is the peak when it's going, it needs an incubation time. So people are getting exposed today at work and then they're going and testing tomorrow. They're testing negative, but in two more days, they might test positive. So it's because they don't have enough of the virus when they've had that exposure and they're coming in there. They're getting, you know, tested frequently. You, you came like every day to our station. So that's that might be the case where we might have, it's not a false negative. It's just that there's not enough of the virus. So it does have an incubation period. Three to five days.
If you are tested positive, what's what's the time off now?
Yeah. But if you still have symptoms on day six, you can't come to work.
You have to have a negative test to come back.
Yes. So and when they test positive with me, I have my information is I tell them to follow up with their P C P, which is the primary care physician, to have them order the P C R, which is the mail-in one that goes to the lab. Okay. To verify it. So that is the procedure. Once they test positive with me, I refer them to the primary care physician to do a follow-up of one that is mailed into a lab.
Was it always five days off or was it more than that?
It was just ten.
Really? Why the change?
That's too many questions.
Well, I'm confused. It's it's like they don't know what they're talking about. So they went from ten to five days? Why?
Because too many people are off.
That just doesn't make sense. Oh. Okay. Right, right. How many folks are we talking about unvaccinated?
We do not have any way, at least at this time, to tell, but ask me this time next week and I'll be able to tell you.
Is that a HIPAA violation, any chance when inquiring?
It is not.
We got that from Terry.
It is not.
Mr. Brokert, are you?
Yes, I'm here on the line. It's not a HIPAA violation to get that information.
Thank you, sir.
Just for this, anything else, medical record.
So it's a logical question, and that's that's the way I think logically, right? Are we requiring anyone, any other tests as as a condition of employment at this time?
Drug tests.
Okay, so we got drug tests and you've got the COVID test. Anything else? Drug test has been around forever, so. I mean, and where I'm going with this is is, you know, I get it. I get we got it. We got to be prepared. I understand this, but to me, this is a slippery slope, right? I mean, right now, it's this. What is it next? Are we going to require smokers to take tests to make sure they don't have cancer? Are we going to require folks with diabetes to? And just indulge me here. So I'm not really looking for you to answer this, understand. I'm just venting a bit. So I mean, I I get it. I understand. We're trying to comply. I understand. I I just think that this is a slippery slope and I don't understand the logical outcome. As Mark pointed out, folks that were vaccinated can still transmit and or get it. I know some folks personally. So my other question would be out of the folks that I would be interested in, out of the folks that are vaccinated, how many contracted COVID? And out of the folks that aren't vaccinated, how many of those contracted COVID?
Um, we started at December first, we started a new questionnaire and I can give you some statistics further down the road as we do testing. Because I do ask for their vaccines, that they say we're vaccinated, if they've had a booster. So I am, I'm not required to get the dates or anything. All I'm required to ask them is they've been vaccinated, yes or no. That goes in that little form, the governmental form. But I'm then getting dates so that I can kind of track who's been vaccinated, who hasn't. Who are those that have been vaccinated? Are they symptomatic? Are they asymptomatic? So we're, I'm kind of tracking those of the people that I test personally. I'm sure there'll be studies that come out across the board from the federal government somewhere. But again, are those statistics real?
Right. Great point.
I mean, I can tell you.
You said that well. Are they real?
All in words.
Are we part of one hundred and eighteen?
Good question.
Are we what? That is something that Mayor Hill and I actually had this conversation earlier. There is no clear answer to that, Kevin. Something where for some purposes, yes, for some purposes, no.
You're kidding me. Again, with the unclear.
You're not in that group. No. You're not in that, not in the one eighteen. With you guys, it obviously goes up even beyond the threshold.
I had it on my list.
But for example, this was an article from Ansel Link, which is one of the premier municipal attorneys in the state of Illinois. For I R S purposes, yes, you are all employees of the city of Columbia. However, for the Fair Labor Standards Act and the Illinois Wage Act, the Illinois Public Labor Relations Act, the Civil Rights Act, the Age Discrimination in Employment Act and Illinois Human Rights Act, unemployment purposes, you are not employees of the city. I'm not sure if that's something that Illinois OSHA is going to be including in their guidance since they cover public employers in the state. But there's no clear indication, at least as of this time, unless Mr. Brokert, you have seen something to the contrary.
No, not at this point in time. I haven't dug.
What are the other municipalities that you serve? What are you hearing from them or what have you seen from them? Or if anything yet?
The bigger communities like O'Fallon are have gone through this approach. The smaller communities who have less, most of the communities I represent are less than one hundred employees. So they haven't had to go through and do this. But O'Fallon has and and I know we've talked to O'Fallon about this and get some guidance from them. But you know, they're a much bigger community, so they they didn't have much wiggle room and they're 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 going down this path. But as far as this very specific discussion, choice more or choice two, I don't remember exactly which way they went.
Okay, yeah. As far as the, you know, if we could kind of see if they're making their employees pay to test, that's another issue that I would like to have ourselves covered on too. If if something comes back.
I don't know.
Be employed to stay to work, but you know, that's something that kind of want to check on as well. What's that? What'd you say, Terry? I'm sorry.
No, I I didn't know the answer to the question of whether or not they're O'Fallon's charging their employees for the test.
Okay. All right.
Yes, sir. So it, when you implement this thing, you'll have to go ahead and ask every employee to submit either vaccination proof or else be subject to those rules. They have to give you that card or something.
The way that it's worded, if you can be just one moment, this is from the OSHA guideline policy. They should be. Employees that are fully vaccinated must submit proof of vaccine, a vaccination that includes full vaccination. Employees who are partially vaccinated must submit proof of vaccination that indicates when the first dose of vaccination was received, followed by proof of the second dose when it is obtained. Employees who are not vaccinated must either A, submit a statement that you are unvaccinated but are planning to receive a vaccination or B, submit a statement that you are unvaccinated and not planning to receive a vaccination.
So here's another side of this. When when this potentially winds down, say it's in a few weeks or a few months.
Fifteen days to flatten the curve.
Yeah. So are are we going to then be given instructions? Are these people going to get getting swabbed for the next six months or year? Do they have a wind down policy in their OSHA? Thing? Or is it just like, for right now, we're just going to make you test until further notice, which could go for a month or could.
What do you think?
It's it's six months maximum, at least at this time, but obviously it is subject to extension, renewal, what have you.
If it happens. A lot of letters in the alphabet left.
We allowing any exemptions, Doug? Religious, constitutional?
We would have to follow the Human Rights Act and that set of things, Doug. But it's something that I know Governor Pritzker and Terry, I don't know if you're up on this or not. I know at least the religious exemption loophole is closing June or July of this year in Illinois.
So you have.
Yeah, I don't remember the exact date on that.
But that was, that was signed in, I believe, late November, early December, Terry, that
Yes.
The religious exemption loophole was closing.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah. Yes, sir.
Okay, so with the testing and the kits that they've ordered now, is that only subject to people who are not vaccinated? Or can any employees go into her site and if they're feeling poorly one day and that just to be sure and get tested? Is that open to everybody or just non-vaccinated?
The intention is that it's open for anybody, any employee of the city. It started as any employee of the city who has an exposure rather than being subject to a quarantine or an isolation order would be able to submit to the test to stay essentially on days one, three, five and seven. It has.
We're testing people with symptoms, even with that, with an unknown exposure. We were testing people.
Favor that I didn't know if that was restrictive to non-vaccinated or pre-ash.
That was open to all employees.
Yeah. Even city officials. We don't know yet.
So I get, I guess for for now, since we're you know, what's the consensus here of, you know, is the six dollars and twenty-five cents for now?
And it's something that I need to get the draft policy finalized. Am I hearing that we are A, okay with requiring them, one, to do it on their own time? And two, at their expense using EMS? My only thing with that is that because like we require testing for those that have got reasonable accommodations, but we don't charge the employees for the tests. It's something if we're going to mandate it as a as a business or as a city, if we're going to mandate the employees get it, it's a cost of doing business to us. I don't like it coming out of her budget. It'd be better to take the funds out of the general fund because it's a general cost of doing business to the city. So to tell somebody, yes, you can work here, but you're going to have to pay this and you're going to do that. One, they should be able to do it beginning of a shift within reason. There should be some parameters on when they can do it. But really, they shouldn't have to pay for that because that's you know, thirty bucks a month, forty bucks a month or more. So I think if we're going to mandate it like everybody is, like we're having to, I think we should have to eat the cost of that and not the employee. I say charge it to water and sewer. So just charged to water. Are the police? It's got to write more tickets to cover this.
So Doug, question, are we waiting on the discussion this Friday with Supreme Court and we're just wanting to be prepared at this point?
Is recommending that. Well, I highly doubt the Supreme Court will have a decision Friday. So essentially, the first component is I have to get the policy done this week.
You want to be prepared. Yes. Got it.
And barring something miraculous on the tenth, I need to have everybody's vaccination status.
Yeah. Unfortunately, we're in the state of Illinois, so yeah, we're not going to get any help from the lawsuits and things like that or stain in other states, so.
It is something that I will, based off of the conversation, the feedback tonight, finalize the policy. It's likely that I'll have at least a draft out to you. Finalize the policy. It's likely that I'll have at least a draft out to you tomorrow. At least for your review. So at least you know what direction we're going. It's something that unless I hear otherwise, we'll go ahead and probably make effective Friday. And then if we certainly need to revisit it in light of anything from the Supreme Court or if there are significant issues voiced on an individual basis by any of the aldermen or the mayor, we can bring it back up on the eighteenth for a further discussion.
And seventeen. Kim, we'll we'll see that. Okay, we'll see that you get compensated back to your budget than the cost of the cost of the test, so, yeah.
Okay, I mean, we'll see how we use these and if we need, what's gonna go on in the next six months.
Yeah, okay. All right. Well, thank you and your staff for doing the testing and we appreciate it. So appreciate it. All right. That is all the items for the new business. This time I'll entertain a motion to go into closed session. Pursuant to five ILCS one twenty-two C two collective bargaining. Item two is five ILCS one twenty-two C eight, security procedures. Then item three is five ILCS one twenty-two C eleven, pending our probable litigation. Alderman Holcamp, Alderman Neimetz, roll call.
Neimetz.
Yes.
Wrestler?